All right, we'll call this meeting to order. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance. All right, first up is approval of the agenda.
Second?
Been moved in seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Motion carries. First up is, well, the only thing up is the 25-26 budget discussion.
So, let me set the tone. So, Delise has been working on this, I will say tirelessly for a long time. One of the things that I want everyone to remember tonight is she's gonna set the tone about where we're at if we didn't do any changes, okay? And so, tonight, what our goal is, when she's done with the presentation, our goal is to stop at like 5:50, 5:55, so we have a stretch break before we start our regular board meeting, is explaining where we think the cuts need to come from, where the things are that we're moving forward, and so, and I'm taking notes as well as that being recorded. Have you turned on the recording? Need to turn on the recording. So that, we wanna make sure we catch, capture all of the thinking, okay? So, Delise will have the floor for most of the evening. Deanna and I may add in as it goes on, but that's kind of where we're at. Does that make sense? Okay, so, and prepare, this is not the funnest meeting we probably are ever gonna have. I work long, gonna die, so we're using Deanna's. Okay, okay. Blake, can you please pull up the spreadsheet that I sent you earlier? Perfect. Then you could go to the cover page tab and make it bigger so everybody can... Okay, so, we, I'm just gonna start with, with the basics of, of really where we're at. I've been working with the E S C a lot on this, and they, they were gonna pop on for the study session, maybe they'll pop on for the regular meeting. But, this is where we're at. If we... You're fine. If we do not change where we're at right now, we will end the 25-26 full year with a negative fund balance of $628,000. That includes, and the costs include, I mean, all of our RIFs that we did, the M O U language for the P E A. However, we still have bargaining groups that bargained for a lot more. Our P S C, the increase for salaries is $300,000 alone, even with the people that we cut. And so, there are some important notes that we'll go over. I have my ideas on, on what I propose cutting to get us back to where we're supposed to be, or at a more comfortable place, but at the end of the day, it's not, you know, my decision. So, the first thing that I wanna start with is our estimated starting fund balance. My personal opinion is we are going to be about $300,000 greater than this. However, I'm not going to overpromise and underdeliver. I would rather budget conservatively and have us come out better in the long run than the opposite. I did that last year too. I budgeted that we were going to end at a $1.2 million fund balance, and we actually ended at a $2.1. But, for the sake of money-wise, fiscally-wise, and to really show where we're at, I'm using the more conservative fund balance of $675,000. As you can see, our salaries are our biggest, our biggest portion of our budget. They accumulate to almost $37 million when our total budget is $46.5. It's a lot. Viva alone is almost a million dollars. So, we're spending $805,000 a year on Viva for our employees. It's just, that is just unheard of in any district at all, and that is due to our C B As and bargaining, and not able, able to do regressive bargaining for a lot of that. Every single person in our district gets Viva. Some groups get more than others, but we don't have a single employee that does not get Viva. So, that is, that's a big thing. If you, Blake, can you go to the next tab, the notes tab, please? And scroll to the top. And make it bigger. Yes, please. Thank you. So, you all have a copy of this Excel sheet. I have separate tabs for each bargaining group. The one that, the one that we're presenting has no names. If you would like the ones with the names from the system, I would be more than happy to send that to you. But, from the mishaps that we had last year, I thought it would be smarter just to leave them all pulled together. So, the, the first thing that I wanna talk about is our salaries. Our salaries are high. Everybody got an increase this year, whether it was just I P D or I P D plus, depending on what their bargaining group agreed to. The, the big thing on salaries, which we, we budgeted for a certain amount but not enough, are our subs, our overtime, and our extra time. We spent $1 million in subs this year. A million dollars. Half a million for certified and half a million for classified. This, you know, I, I sent Kim and Deanna and Kevin a report, a sub-report this morning for the year, and other than what's in their contract and what they're bargaining for, so sick, vacation, personal, our sped staff gets some paperwork days that are bargaining for, we have an insane amount of absences that are using codes they shouldn't be. One of them being district-initiated. So, we have a lot of staff, and I haven't had a chance to look through all the members, but Deanna brought up a couple that she knows wouldn't ever have a district-initiated day and used it consistently. So, when we talk about our frontline and it needing to be cleaned up, that's a big, a huge part of it. We had 622 full-day absences for district-initiated and professional development. And so, those, that is one area that we really, really have to look into and clean up. Deanna and I talked about turning those off completely and only allowing people with prior approval that are on administrative leave to use those kinds of leave, and then professional development, scheduling that to where you don't need a sub, because we're paying the sub cost and we're paying the the payroll cost also, the regular base salary cost. So, we're doubling up on a lot. For coaches, we have some coaches that are on our staff that are full-time employees. So, we pay for their sub when they're gone, we pay for their regular salary, and then we pay for their coaching stipend, at all at the same time. So, that is another area that we have to look at. Now, that is a small area in the sub world, but it's still, it still makes a difference, you know, cash flow-wise. So, that's something that we have to look at. A lot of the sub time is people being gone on comp time. So, we'll get into that when we talk about overtime. A lot of our classified employees get overtime or comp time. It's in their contract. And if you accumulate comp time, you have to use that comp time. And when you're a secretary, or a custodian, or a food service person, and you're using comp time, you have to get a sub. So, we're paying salaries and sub costs on top of that. Extra and overtime for our classified staff, we spent $400,000 this last year on overtime. Extra time, overtime.
We define the difference for them, the difference?
So, we have, we have staff members that are eight hours a day. Some of them are 2.5, some of them are five, some of them are seven. We have very few that are 2.5. That's like our food service workers. But, that is anything above and beyond contracted time, extra time is. And then overtime is when we get to our full-time staff who will go over eight hours per day. That's overtime rate. It's time and a half.
I would just say, for, but for example, some of that is approved time. So, like today, we're implementing our panorama program. We had staff here training on that. We're paying their extra time out of grants. So, there will be some extra time that is authorized, that, that teachers have. But, Delise, I think our bigger problem is when people do the time without either approval.
And that was a huge thing this year, is, you know, we put a cap on it, we put a freeze on overtime, and we were getting staff still turning in 30-plus hours of overtime. And Ellen and I rules, we can't just not pay them. They could agree, they would sue, we, we have to pay them. And so, it really is a top-down thing trying to, and you know, and Kim has made the effort with the unions of, hey, no overtime next year unless I approve it, and we've gotten a ton of pushback, a ton of pushback. But, the fact of the matter is, is we can't, we cannot afford it. And regardless of the work that needs to be done, I, I know that all this overtime isn't being utilized as it should. You have a set job. If you don't get your job done in those set hours, your admin needs to help, or you need to come back in the morning and, and finish your job, or prioritize what you're doing. We have, you know, we have departments that were overstaffed, you know, that we have RIFs. But, the reality is, is a lot of our departments are understaffed. You know, my department is understaffed. Deanna's department is understaffed. Our nursing staff is understaffed. And so, there's, you know, the work is still there and we're losing people. However, I think that there are things that can be done to mitigate that. That $400,000 does not include comp time. It does not include comp time. So, there's no real way to calculate comp time, because they, they can take it off, and then by the end of August, if it's not used, they cash out. So, I really don't even have, I won't have an exact number for comp time cash outs until August payroll is completed. But, that hurts us also, and that goes back to the sub costs when we have people taking comp time that need a sub. And then, the fourth item for extra time is extra certified time. So, our certified staff, they get their base salary, they get 56.5 hours of enrichment, and then they, they have stipends for separate things. So, some of them have stipends for extra days, some of them have sped stipends, club stipends, and that, that is a tab on here too. However, this time that is being turned in and being paid is above and beyond what they're contracted for, and that's $260,000 worth. So, if they're doing interviews, if they're doing like a thinking maps training, if, Deanna could probably shed some more light on that.
And that doesn't mean that some of our, some of them aren't grants, so some of them are reversible, but this is just the total dollar. So, we don't, at this point, we're bringing to you what it is, but some of it is reimbursable, but I'm just sharing with you.
So, so, the, the total cost for all of that is $1.6 million extra this year. So, and that leads me into my next piece of the budgeted salaries. We budgeted $37.2 million for salaries, and that is straight from the system. So, that includes their supplementals, their whole base salary, their benefits, everything. We are forecasted by the end of August to be at $38.5 million in salaries. It's a lot.
That's that 1.6, right?
It's, it's a lot, so...
Just trying to get, make sure you see the, the 1.6 plus 37.5.
It's a lot. It is a lot. And our, you know, even with the cuts that we had this year and the M O Us from the P E A, we're still forecasted at $37 million for salaries. It's a lot. You know, and some cost savings that, that we've had that have helped a little bit, but that we are going to be responsible for next fiscal year is enrichment hours. You know, P E A has an M O U where they gave up a bunch of enrichment hours. They went from 56.5 to 22 hours each. And that's a $400,000 cost savings that we're going to be responsible for next. It's only a one-year M O U.
Let's just, so when we're saying next year, she's talking to 26, 27, because we're already, okay, I just wanna make sure.
Yeah.
Next year meaning the following after this budget.
Yep, 26, 27. So, that is helping us this year, but we have to plan for that next year. We can't expect them to, to do that again, and I doubt that they will. It's, it's a big cost. We are saving approximately $22,000 for the admin days that were forfeited. But again, it's a one-year M O U. We're gonna be responsible for that next year, and salaries are going to continue to increase, so that number will go up. Another thing that I want to point out is our, our revenue projections are down $1 million and a half. This is due to enrollment. All of enrollment, our title money is being cut significantly. It's a big hit for us.
And this is not necessarily the information that I put out to the public about the, some of the title monies and the migrant monies, that we got some of that back. This is what we didn't get back, plus our reduction in some of Deanna's other programs. So, if anybody's listening, I wanna make sure.
Yep, it does not include any of the proposed cuts for 26, 27 for migrant entitlement. And so, our expense projections are down from this year, but it doesn't really matter when our, when we don't have a fund balance, right? And so, so there, we have work to do. As a team, we have work to do on, to decide what else we need to cut. My next thing that I want to talk about is, is my opinion. I'm not the one who's making this final decision, but from a fiscal standpoint, the, the places where I believe that we can make cuts to make up the difference is sub costs. So, I would like to see that those costs cut in half for classified and certified. It's the half a million dollar savings. And that means, you know, doing the work of going through frontline, taking out the apps, the absence reasons that aren't there, doing the work within frontline for coding to make, making sure that the hours are correct, making sure that leave is accurate. If you don't have leave, you shouldn't be putting it in. It should be leave without pay. But, we're having an issue with frontline and Skyward connecting. And so, that's, that's a huge issue there. I want to cut cut overtime for classified, $340,000. That leaves us 60 grand to work with for the year for, for classified staff for overtime and extra time. We've set the precedent already, no overtime with all of our directors, our administrators, and that means picking up the slack where, where we have to pick up the slack at. I mean, Kim is helping with payroll. Kim and Deanna are helping me with payroll. We're all doing things that are not...
We had a conversation with, with a particular director and said, you know, there was a question on how do I handle blank because of, you know, some different things, and we just said, I guess you're gonna learn how to do that. I, I mean, I don't mean it that flippant or that sharp, but there is no money, so the answer is no. So, we still have to do the work, so we all pitch in and do the work.
Yeah. Yes, we've had a lot of those type of conversations.
The other option we've talked to people about is flex time. If there is something that every, I'm gonna use boredom. If there's some back-to-school night, then you're gonna rotate your staff and you're gonna have two, and please understand, I'm just giving you the examples. You're gonna have two people come in in the morning at the normal time, and then two we're gonna save and work the evening, right? Instead of all four work normal hours and two work overtime. Does that make sense? We're gonna, we're gonna require flex time.
The next piece is the extra cost for certified. I would also like to cut that $200,000, leaving them with 60, 60 grand. And I did that to be fair for classified and certified. I don't think one's more important than the other, and I don't want to give one a bigger budget than the other. I, I understand that work needs to be done. There are things that we, we don't plan for, but I think we can be more fiscally responsible in that way and, and cut those costs. The next one's travel. It's really not that big, because we did cut a lot of travel this year, but we still are spending $150,000 in travel. This does not include registration. This is just travel. And so, a lot of this is grants, but I mean, we're not getting any of our L F S I grants this year, and a lot of travel logistics for that. I understand that some travel is needed for particular things, but we've also already said to President, no travel at all for this coming year regardless of whether it's grant-funded or not. So, I would like to cut that $100,000, leaving us with $50,000 in the budget for, for travel stuff. My next proposal, I have some principal friends in the crowd, and they probably want to kill me, is our, is our building budgets. We, we, we have a budget about $335,000 that we allocate to the buildings based on their F T E. And we allow them to use this money for whatever they see fit. It's their money based on their F T E. If they want to buy paper, if they wanna get a new sign, if they, you know, that, it's completely up to them. In a perfect world, I would love to do that. I would love nothing more than to give my buildings their allocations and let them have free reign. We just don't have the cash for it. We just don't. And so, my proposed cut, my proposed cuts is $185,000, leaving with each, each building about $30,000. We've had discussions about supply ordering and having it come through our office. Ma- Mapton doesn't even allow them to buy paper at all. She says, nope, you're gonna take a picture of, of what you need with your phone and take it home. And we really need to cut back on supplies, which is my next proposed cut. And I, I think another thing is, is, and we all know, like, we all, we all love a certain sticky note. We all love a certain pen. We all have our, our favorite paper that we order and that we buy, and it's just something that we're gonna have to go without. We, we really just are. We spent $1.4 million on just supplies this year for the whole district. And that's just one code of supply. It does not include I T, like tech stuff. It's just...
That doesn't, and I wanna make sure we're talking, this is not power, this is not, you know, right, this is... I hate to say this, but this is stock.
Stock. Yep, stock.
Yep. And, and don't get me wrong, it, it might be a chair, it might be a desk. So, when I say stuff, I mean, it's things you can hold on to, okay? So, it's, doesn't mean we spent $1.4 million on paper or pens, but it's anything that's tangible that you can hold on.
It's not, it's not cleaning supplies and filters and things like that. It's just school supplies, basically.
It's basically supplies. We have different, like, I T uses a different code for for their supplies, right? Their I T hardware and stuff like that. We use a different code for ink and all of that. So, these are, it's truly just supplies. So, for example, our transportation department wanted new mailboxes. That would be a supply. Do they need new mailboxes? No, but it would make their lives easier, so they bought new mailboxes. That's a supply. We spent $1.4 million. And we have to cut that. So, my proposed cut is cutting $750,000 of that, leaving with us still with, I feel like a healthy budget of $650,000 for the year for the district. And this is, so we, we've been, they've been ordering stuff for this next year. We've been approving all the P Os and getting everything, so this really truly is everything we've paid up to this point. So, with my proposed cuts, it would, it would be a savings of about $2 million. No, no, so it, it's all, it's all under the, all under the fix 5610 code. So, my, my proposal would be to give the buildings the $30,000 each, and then having them order their supplies through us. So, all of their paper, all of their pens, all of their bindings, all of that stuff, so we can track it and that we can really say yes or no.
So, an example, she used this, I'm sorry. She used the example of a sign. So, the district, the building says, we really need this sign for blank. That would be out of their $30,000. We're trying to do centralized paper finds, centralized pens. Does that make sense? Lined paper, things like that.
Yes, correct. Like, for example, I mean, if, if you've been to the district office and, and where our mailboxes is, there's a million pieces of colored paper, and nobody knows where they came from or how long we've had them, and we don't use them. So, it's, it's purchases like that that put us in a hole. You know, we, we're going in and approving every P O, but I can't see in the P O whether Joe Schmo was ordering 70 tool pens or, you know, BIC pens and paper and, you know, A, B, and C. You shouldn't be spending $5 on that. I get it. I love tool pens, but I'm gonna buy that myself with my own money. I wouldn't expect the district to pay for it.
The other thing that I know, because I know teachers, if our teachers really went into their classrooms and looked at what they already have, like, we've done a lot of, every year you get so much amount of money as a teacher to purchase things, and there are certainly things they need to restock or that they use, like a teacher might use. Like, honestly, mechanical pencil sharpeners are an example, because they burn out. They don't last forever. Some people will buy, if their math teacher might buy three, you know, pencil sharpeners, because when one goes out, they throw it, put the new one in. So, but the reality is, there's probably a ton of supplies in drawers and cupboards. If you remember COVID, there was a picture in the newspaper. Remember, there was a complete shortage of, of disinfecting wipes, and we found something like, I don't know, hundreds of containers of disinfecting wipes, which parents had bought, because kids were supposed to bring a certain number of containers every year, and teachers were just stocking them in their cupboards. And so, I can tell you, Kleenexes probably at one point, maybe not now, because we've now moved to like a central purchasing for the Kleenexes, but there's, there's stuff.
Definitely stuff.
And what we've got now is...
Right. Yeah. No, and, and that's a great idea. You know, instead of giving them the full allocation, just giving them the $30,000 upfront for their supplies and everything. And I ju, I also just want to say, you know, these, these are not permanent, right? We, we need to be able to sacrifice for a couple of years to get us to a financially comfortable place, so we can get back to providing a full allocation for the building budget. So, we can get back to travel. I, I mean, I haven't, I wasn't able to go to a school conference this year. None of us were. None of my staff have. And there's professional developments happening all year that we're in desperate need of. But, we're just not doing it. And so, that is, that is just one thing that I, I do want to say is that these are temporary. To get us to a better place financially, we have to make these sacrifices to get there.
And that goes with the right sizing.
Correct.
And one of the things that we're talking about, and I know there's people listening and, and I have many questions, and please understand, I'm, I'm not saying we will, I'm saying options, okay? We have, something's going to have to give, right? I hate to use the word regressive bargaining, but somewhere along the line, I'm including myself in this, by the way, okay? Something has to give. We have to right-size based on the number of students we do have and the salaries that we have. And I believe, I don't know if it was Jason or Brian who brought up, McCleary was the start of this. And this idea that our levy dollars make up the difference, what the state doesn't give. But then, we're just going back to our community and asking for more. We've got to figure out a way to... I don't know if you, I'm gonna sidestep here, and I'm not gonna take too much time, but I want it, I want you to think about something. In your household, I don't know if you've taken your whole family out to dinner lately. In your household, I don't know if you've taken your whole family out to dinner lately. I'm just, we're chuckling. Everybody's kind of rolling their eyes and looking. It's a killer. So this is not just Prosser School District. This is your household budget. My dad and I live alone at the house, right? Two old people who don't eat very much and it's two bags of groceries and it's two hundred dollars, right? So I want to re-understand, this is just not Prosser School District. This is a societal, this is a thing that we're all having to fix. And we have to be in it together. So I want everybody to understand that. Um, if the IPD, inflationary price determiner is two point nine and the staff, the state gives us two point nine in our apportionment, but that's only for three quarters of our employees, then we have to take the two point nine and divide it between everybody and now everybody gets one point eight or whatever the mathematical number would be. Because, I mean, next year, I don't know what we're going to do without, in the twenty-six, twenty-seven budget, without our potential loss of migrant and all the title point that I've said. I don't know what that's going to do to our system, the operational functions of our system. So tonight, I told you it wasn't going to be a very fun meeting. We have to figure out where to cut two million dollars in our budget. And these are our proposals. Delise and Deanna's and mine. This is our proposal. We would like, um, tonight, something that says, yeah, I think you're on the right track. No, you're not, because at our next week's study session, we would like to be able to show you here's where the, a little more finite, maybe? Finite, this is what it looks like.
I wanted to ask a question about cutting costs for subs, overtime, extra time, comp time, and just correct me if I heard you wrong, but it sounds like a lot of this happens, like, it happens and then you find out about it and have to pay for it. So like, what controls can be put into place to prevent it? You know, you can set a lower budget, but if you're, you know, getting billed and then you have to pay it, you're going to blow your budget. So like, what controls can be put into place to prevent this from happening?
That's, well, all of us can probably chime in on this. This is turning off all absence reasons other than sick or personal. And then you would have to go to someone else. Or, so I'm just going to use an example. Um, you are the track coach and you need to leave at two o'clock because the bus is leaving at two, so you need a sub for the last hour of school. You would have to come to whoever has authorization to put in the request for the sub. Instead of you putting in, in say, district-directed time or athletics, right? It would have to be put in by somebody because then we would say, yes, you're correct, you've got to. And then the person who puts it in is held accountable for the reason and that there's budget money for it.
Right, right.
Does that make sense? So that's our check and balance. So we, so right now, there's ten reasons and some codes, but we're going to have to cut it down to whatever your contract says for your personal. So you have sick or vacation or personal. And that's it. And somebody else is going to have to monitor so that the overtime meets the codes.
And, and then another thing that we found out this year too, um, since I was doing payroll for a few months, is that, you know, we cut out all roving last year. Um, there were still buildings using roving subs. And we had three mystery pairs. We had three mystery pairs that we had no idea who they were, uh, because they were, they were picking up jobs under a roving sub. Um, and so we always like, where, who is this person? Who are they covering for? Um, so that's, that's another piece of it. Um, is really tightening that down. Um, having any over extra time get pre-approved by Kim first, and she has set the precedent with the unions. They've gotten pushback on it. Uh, but if she's not approving it, then there was, there's no way that we wouldn't know about it, right? Um, we've, we've had those tough conversations with our directors and our departments that do a lot of overtime. Um, but it's, it, it's going to, it's a team effort and from the top down of really tightening it up.
So, so Delise sent me that report today and I went through like every line. Um, looking at it and there, there was a handful that were like probably of, I don't know how many there were, but there was a lot. That probably five percent of them are actually PDI approved. There was PD that, um, was approved by a previous director or arranged by a previous director, but I don't think it was being coded properly. So it's probably being also paid the wrong way. So if I am a fifth grade dual teacher, that's a, we pay them with basic ed money. What if I'm going to go do a, uh, dual language professional development? That sub should be charged to bilingual and then some of that is not happening. Um, there's, uh, there is a lot of, like, you'll, if you saw the report, there's a ton of CTE teachers out, like, some twenty-two days. Now, that's paid by CTE. Their code of CTE is paid by CTE and they have certain things like they might go to national conference or they're gone for the fair. Like, those things are going to happen. So you're going to have people out and there is going to be sub costs. But the reality is, if the sub cost is not coming out of the right place, it comes out of basic ed if they're a basic ed person. If they're paid for with LAP and it's not coded properly, that's going to come out of LAP. If they're paid for out of special ed, I know there was probably special ed teachers that paperwork days. Well, that would be coded to sped, so that would be okay if they took a day off and it was coded to sped. But there was also teachers in sped that took, that did professional development with their PEA professional development. And technically, that sub cost should not have come out of sped and it did. So because things, you, you can go in, if I'm sick, I can go in and put sick. If I need a personal day, I can go in and put a personal. If I need vacation, I can put a vacation. But people are pretty using district, kind of the district initiated as a blank check. So we have testing we have to do. I saw on there, there was nine days where someone got a district initiated sub to do testing. Nobody asked permission for that, but it's something that's been done in the past, so they just probably did it because we've done it in the past. So those things just have to be like, we're not doing this anymore. You've got to figure out how to do it with what you've got.
That's what I was wondering. Did someone review these timesheets for?
No, it's not a timesheet. So if I go into frontline and say, I'm going to be out and put district initiated, then, um, and I wouldn't do that because I don't have to get a sub, but if I went in and did that because of the way that's coded right now in our system, that's why she's saying we have to pull that. That can't be there anymore. There was a purpose for it at one time because there might be a district initiated. I tell Kim Casey, she needs to go to the training because it's for public records and we have to know how to do them. And I said she has to go, she's going to go, it's district initiated. We can still have district initiated, but there has to be a code tied to it that they have to have. And it can't be, like, I could put in, because I'm the boss, I can put in her sub code. She can't do it herself. Secretary can't do it.
This is something like, we, we currently can't flip the switch on this.
Oh, no, we can't.
We're flipping it.
Yeah, we can and we will.
Just so you know.
The report Delise sent me today, I've never seen, I've never seen that before. So we're digging into things that we really, like, there, guys, there's a million things going on. There's a million moving pieces every day in this whole district, especially what's going on. So some of these things, like Delise is one like, oh, look at this report. Where we have, can dig into things like, let's look at these sub costs. What's going on here? So that we can find those places where there's a hole in the dike that needs to be plugged.
I mean, it, I mean, it just sounds like something that should have been done a long time ago.
I don't, don't disagree.
We're agreeing a hundred percent.
Yep.
And I, and I'm going to be as transparent, you know me, I just tell it the way it is. When you have the money, you don't notice. Right? You, when, when your cash flow in your house is, you don't have to watch what the bank balances. You pull up and you fill up with gas and there's money in there. And it really doesn't matter if it was forty dollars or sixty-two dollars until you don't have sixty-two dollars in the check. Right? And so I'm using that as an example because we don't have the sixty-two dollars in the checking account and we're looking for every single penny. And this is where we're finding the pennies.
What I'm, what I'm saying is, I think ninety, ninety-nine, ninety-eight percent of the absences that I saw there were probably valid. There's probably valid reason. But they're not being coded properly. There's too much freedom that has to change. And even if we've been able to do it in the past, we can't do it anymore.
I don't know if you can tell, we're a little tense. This is pretty problematic.
We're a little tense these days.
Uh, we still like each other, but it's a little grouchy in our office.
A lot of tears. Um. Uh, just, just, oh, sorry, sorry. Um. So that, that is, that's basically it. That, this is where we're at. Um, I've included the tabs on the bottom for each of you to review and look at and I'd be more than happy to send you the ones with names on them. So it's easier to kind of gauge what you're looking at because it's kind of hard when all you see is a pay code and a type of position. Um, to really see with, I mean, each union, the different stipends that we're responsible for, um, that they have negotiated into. Um, you know, even another thing is, is coaches. We, our, our coaching costs are huge and we cut. We did a bunch of MOUs with the, with the bargaining unit. Um, we got rid of combos. We have coaches volunteering. Um, but our, our coaching cost alone is half the charge. This does not include the athletic piece of travel, uniforms and, and everything to keep athletics going. This is just purely salaries. It's not include officials. It doesn't include anything. Um, and we have eighty, we spent eighty thousand dollars this year in post-pay. Which is great because our teams are doing great, but it's not great for us financially when our levy dollars are paying for athletics. Um, and so even, you know, even with the cuts of coaches or the, it's going to cost us five hundred and twenty without dollars. Levy, it's all athletics. It's all athletics.
And don't get me wrong, we passed a levy by a good percentage and that was, they knew that. So I don't think that's um, not known to the community. Does that make sense? However, we might need some of those levy dollars to function for reading, writing, and arithmetic, right?
Yeah.
Can you use volunteer subs? Have they're certified?
Um, I think that potentially we could have a labor issue, but there are certainly things we can use volunteers for. Um, so I was looking, when I was looking through that sub report today. Um, there were some, there was a field trip where lots, lots of kids went on the trip and some kids were still left behind and there were subs and I was thinking, like, when we considered whether we could do this event again, I was, I had no idea that, that they got to be, that they had put in subs under district initiated. I don't know why they needed to do that. There was no reason. You could have just, you could have got lots of parent volunteers. We have hundreds of parent volunteers on our list now. Getting them sometimes in to do those things, that lots of parents get, will take a day off to do a one-day fun trip with their kids on a, on a field trip. So there's just things that we, that are costing us money that just, we just have to change our practices and find ways to do it that don't cost us money or cost us a lot less than what it's costing us now. Because our labor costs, we, we are dealing with some, the impacts of some collective bargaining things that have happened in the past that were not the responsibility of anybody seen. But they are there. So we have to deal with it. And that being said, by the way, we have a lot of people that are worth lots of money and they deserve, you know, pay for all of the work that they do. But we, we pay a ton of extra money and a ton of extra time. And we have, uh, collective bargaining things in our collective bargaining agreements that we have to, that impact us, that we have to deal with and we have to pay. We don't have a choice. So, um, COVID kind of hid some of that because of the S R money. So some of that, you know, going over and going over, like, there was a way to absorb some of that impact, but that's like far gone.
I think had we not had the S R money and the COVID money, this would have happened five or six years ago.
I agree with that, that it would have happened sooner because the S R fund's coming in, but remember when McCleary happened, the state also cut our levies down. Um, if you go back and look at our levies previously, there are a lot more than a dollar fifty per thousand. And when the state cut that dollar fifty and then they, they created a permanent tax of a dollar fifty that went to, back to the state.
Instead of coming here.
So a- as we currently sit, Delise, with your proposed cuts, like, to make this stuff happen, what, what do you guys need? I ju- I'm just going back to, I mean, on the agenda for tonight, there's a frontline time and attendance being proposed, but like, what do you guys need to make, make this happen, I guess?
Uh, just direction from you on, on what you all would like me to do moving forward. Um, if you agree with my proposed cuts, if you have proposed cuts of your own, if you want to think about it and get back to me. Um, you know, I will do whatever you guys need me to do. Um, this is just the, really the black and white, the icky picture of where we're at. Um.
And I'm going to ask you, within guidance and reason to accept her proposed cuts as a superintendent.
Are they feasible? Like, do you feel like the district can operate within those budgeted amounts?
Absolutely. They're, they're absolutely feasible. Um, I think there's going to be a lot of people that aren't very happy. Um, but I'm used to that at this point. Um, uh, but we, we all have to sacrifice really, it, it's going to be a struggle, right? It's going to be a struggle. We're, we're already having to pick up pieces of, of people's work. Um, but it, it's needed. It really truly is needed, you know, unless we have a chunk of people we can cut that I don't know about, then.
Good question. So if we cut, if we do all these cuts and we're successful, does that bring our total budget down to forty-four million?
Yeah, so it would, it would bring the budget down and then it would bring our estimated fund balance up to about one point five, depending.
Remember, she keeps me in check and I'm saying one point eight because she's really good with money and she's going to get, end the year better.
Sixty, sixty dollars.
Mm-hmm.
All right. Um, you know, I, I, I don't, I don't know. Um, I've actually gotten a few emails from our Viva consultant. Um, and they think we're, we're out of an RCW by offering more Viva to other groups and others. Um, that we're actually violating the WAC. So that's something that we need to look into to see if that's what we're doing. But it's been brought to my attention by our Viva rep, um, Gallagher, which Gallagher, I think is, um, recently that, um, because it's, it's going on in other districts as well. So that's something that we need to look at. And then obviously, if we are in violation of something, we would have to bring that back.
So an example of what she's saying is the RCW, there's some, if you look into the language, what you would have to do is you would have to take that, pretend the seven hundred, seven hundred thousand dollars. And that money then would have to be equally divided upon stall members if we're in violation of that. And this is not something we're going to know tomorrow or the next day. Um, or you would have to start at your lowest and then renegotiate all of that moving forward.
Basically says that just because they're in a different classification, that we can't pay that at the point that others are. Um, so we need to talk to our legal team about it and do something to see if we are violation.
And like she said, there's, I don't know too many districts that that offer Viva that don't do that. So this is not an action item, but we knew, do need guidance.
I have another quick question. Um, look, I, I think it's the F one ninety-five, is that right? Um, Under the ASB fund for this year, you have a, we have basically an increase of about a hundred ninety thousand for athletics in that versus what we budgeted for last year.
Oh, so, so a- all of those budgets I get from the school. So, um, we had, we had one group of, I can't remember what sport it was, but they were proposing to, um, fundraise a bunch of money and then a bunch of donations. And so I get the budgets from the ASB budgets from the high school. They give me their proposed, what they're going to fundraise and what they're going to spend. I believe it was wrestling. I believe it was wrestling, I'll have to go back and look at my stuff, but the, the, all of that info is from what the schools give me. So if they are proposing they're going to fundraise a hundred thousand dollars and spend that, then that's what we budget for. And there's also another one on there that was, was expecting to get a big donation. So they were doing a car wash, uh, I think it was wrestling, I'll have to go back and look, but it was, it was quite big. Oh, the car wash was like twenty-five, we had like, we had like multiple things, and then a big donation for somebody. Yeah, do I think they're gonna raise that money? Probably not, but that's what they're budgeting for and what the kids signed off. And that, that will get tweaked. Um, so I have, I have a list of, of things, uh, the ESD sent me, just number-wise, like, um, making sure that things are, are equal, so that those will get tweaked a little bit, but all the funds besides general fund will basically.
Well, I guess, you know, my opinion, um, you know, we need to cut enough, and, and I think your recommendations are, I think that's, that is what it is, right? I mean, we're, I don't, I don't think we, we can't even approve a budget that goes into a negative fund balance because we wouldn't have money to finish the budget, right?
They would take over.
And, and we would be, yeah, I would, I mean, that's really the, the crux of it. So, um, I, you know, I'm fully on board with cutting anything and everything, um, that needs to be cut. You know, one, one of the things, um, you know, that we need to get back to kind of the basics of education, right? That's what we're here for. That's what this, that's what this business is, is educating our kids. Uh, but we can't do it if we're bankrupt. So, um, I, I, I'm good with it.
Agreed.
Agreed.
The only other thing I do wanna share is we are working with WASBO, which is the ASB organization that, not WASBO, I'm sorry. Well, the ASB to see what a building could choose to do if the students chose to do it out of their ASB budgets. Because their ASB budgets are quite healthy. Um, I'll just give you an example, it's simple and the community loves it. Um, basic education probably could not fund Princess Theater and our things, but the ASB, the kids could say, we wanted, we fundraised, we did the Chocolate Cells of Heights, we wanna do Princess Theater, and they can do it out of their ASB money. Does that make sense? So we can, we can do, be creative if those are things a student wanna do and the students wanna vote on. So, so can I give an example?
I think capital probably knows our ASB fund is so big that they don't, they don't have, they don't fully utilize the money that they raise for the projects that they're doing. And we're approaching our time, but they need to start using that money before we ever utilize basic ed.
Cool, and we, you know, and Ken and I will talk about this more, but we all, we did push on that a lot this year. So we'll, we actually will, are going to do a, a budget extension for ASB for the twenty-four, twenty-five. So we'll do that, we'll, we'll, we'll have to advertise it for two weeks, so it'll be probably twenty-eight for ten minutes. Um, and they didn't spend that much over, but we put a, a big capacity in there for spending and they did, they did fundraise and spend it. We've been pushing and pushing and pushing for them to spend. Um, but at the same time, we still have a huge balance in there. Uh, and they'll have a bigger balance because a, a, one thing that we're doing this next year is getting rid of impressed funds. So that each of the buildings basically have a revolving checkbook account, um, that they can use to, to pay for stuff. Um, WASBO and the auditors have strongly suggested that we cut all of them. Um, they're just too much risk, and so they'll get all of the cash that's in their impressed account into their ASB general accounts and they can use that as a benefit. Can you mention the princess? But you know, there's a lot of things like that that we like to bring in enrichment activities towards students and I hope that we can figure out some way that even if the district can't fund it or we can't find grants up on these things where we can allow the community to contribute with support to them and they wanna keep it going.
Well, thanks.
Yep. Yeah. Yeah. I mean, I would hate to just say, sorry, we can't afford it and we're not willing to accept community help either.
I guess that's why I brought, I guess that's why I brought that one up. If there's a will, there's a way, we just have to use those options.
Maybe I'll, I'll add one more to that. I mean, I think, you know, if we look at Princess Theater or any of the choir band, any of those other enrichment opportunities, you know, if we're gonna say we're not gonna fund them out of basic education, then I think we should, you know, no, nobody's gonna like to hear this, but I think sports should be, you know, some, somewhat self-funded. Um, you know, because if we're gonna cut all those opportunities but not share the pain with the rest of them, um, then I think we're doing all of our students a disservice, so.
Yeah, I've had a lot of parents actually ask me about, like, why aren't we moving to a pay-to-play type model? Because, you know, we're budget cuts and we want people to have athletics. You know, people should pony up if they can.
Yeah.
All right, so as we wrap up, we get ready for our next meeting, because this will have to be adjourned. I'm hearing that we're going to move forward with very drastic budget cuts as per, as similar what proposed this evening for our meeting next Wednesday.
Yep. All right, um, so future study sessions, uh, we'll have another study session on the budget, um, August twentieth, uh, right here in the boardroom at five PM if needed, uh, which I think it will be. Um, and then regular board meeting, of course, right after this, plus the twenty-seventh at six PM to include budget approval, uh, potentially, uh, this meeting's adjourned.